All right, the time is now 5:01. Good evening and welcome, and thank you for joining the April 9, 2025 Policy and Governance Committee Meeting. I am Dr. Felton Moss, Committee Chair and District 7 Board Member. It brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting, and I look forward to our work tonight. For those who are unable to observe now, the meeting is being recorded and can be assessed on the PGCPS YouTube channel for viewing. Ms. Adley, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Moss.
Present.
Mr. Briggs.
Present.
Ms. Boozer-Struther.
Present.
Ms. Walker.
Present.
Ms. Jackson. We have four persons.
All right, we have a quorum tonight. The Policy and Governance Committee will be called to order. So tonight's meeting was called to address policies that unintentionally became backlog due to the cancellation of our February meeting, caused by the snowstorm. Are there any objections? If there are no objections, the committee shall adopt the April 9, 2025 meeting agenda. Ms. Adley, will you? Oh, I don't need to, there are no objections. April 9. Public comments on agenda items, there are no public comments tonight. Ms. Adley, I just want to confirm with you, there are no public comments tonight? No public comments?
Right.
Awesome. Well, at this time, I'm going to recognize Ms. Welsh for the legislative update to give us. I believe Jon Tel might join as well, but Ms. Welsh, if you can begin giving us the legislative update.
Yes. So, as you know, the Excellence in Maryland Public Schools Act did pass. This was a House Bill 504 with numerous amendments in it. They did, I'm going to just hit on different points throughout the, not the policy, but the bill, which I think is important. They do incorporate Education Article 5104 where they talk about the fact that paying for retirement for teachers' pension and retirement system, that those payments are going to be by the county board, the county board, which is really the county government. So they incorporated that into it. As far as the actual foundation, foundation per pupil, target per pupil amount, they did restore for fiscal year 2026, they restored it back to its normal, what it was previously. And then all of the next years are actually, they're not as reduced as they were originally reduced, but they still are a little less than what was originally promised. Just as an example, for fiscal '27, it's actually $171 less than what was in the original amount that they had requested in the following years, like $349 less than before. And then, if you go through, in terms of, they did keep the language in there that if there were a general fund estimate where the general fund revenues by the board, if they hit a point where they do not, they have to be 3.75 below the March general fund estimate. If they come in that low, then there would be no per pupil formula increases. It would be 0% for that year. So, they did keep that there. And then, they kept the language about continuing with the local workforce development where the county boards do funnel the money through to the local workforce developments. And it was originally ending in '26, I think, for fiscal years '25 or '26, but they have now extended it through 2028. However, what they did do is, and I think because there was a lot of conversation about whether or not it's working when it's going through the Local Workforce Development Board, that they actually have put in a tremendous amount of accountability requirements so that the Workforce Development Board has to provide all this information in terms of, just for a couple examples, percentage of students who completed a career readiness assessment, student self-reported confidence, number of students participating in career counseling sessions, number of students who identified post-college and career readiness pathway preferences. They hit, I mean, there's a large number of data points that they're going to be requesting, I think, to look at the, is this program really working and is it worth the money that they're putting into it? As far as the collaborative time per pupil, it's been paused to 2029, but it does start off with an increase of $334 at that point in time. Then they talk about also compensatory education per pupil amount, and they did make changes. So it's a little difficult to really understand what that means for us because in the past, they talked about the education, it would be like 85% for 2026 and 80%. Now they've actually put in numbers, so $7,842 for 2026, $7,786 for 2027. So, I don't know how that relates to the percentages they provided, if it's less, more. If it's, because it, percentage sometimes can get you more in the long run. So, the flat numbers, they sort of limit you. So I am not sure how that impact is, but they did switch over to actual numbers. And then, following, so they give these increases up until 2033, and then after 2033, then any increases would be if there was an inflation adjustment that they needed to make. Then the next thing is... So this has to do with our community schools. They did keep in the language about 50% of the funds could be used for, provide central support to effectively manage program funds or enter into contracts with outside service providers that support at least two eligible schools, coordinate spending on behalf of eligible schools under the sub-paragraph, and any other administrative costs as defined by the department through the education, through the, excuse me, through the regulation. However, they're talking about the fact that if they're going to expend, if any county board expends that 50% on things other than giving it directly to the schools, then they will need to account for how they are using those funds. They didn't have to account anyway, but they have to provide basically a complete report for the entire school system for the county versus where every year for each school, they have each school, you're supposed to write a report implementation report. In this instance, it would be the actual school system that that report is. And I think what they want to do is ensure that they're justifying the funds that are you using, especially for administrative functions, and is it really being used for the amount, for things that are going to support the program? And then, and I... And I think that that piece is where we're going to probably have to make changes in our policy because we have nothing in our policy right now, in the community schools policy, related to looking at a complete report for the entire system, like how, you know, we don't have any of those kinds of requirements listed in the policy. So we're going to have to make some of those changes when we bring that back up. They did keep the Maryland School Leadership Academy with the two sections, one for the Maryland School Leadership Academy, which would be school principal, assistant principal, school-based county, school-based or county board leaders. And then they also kept the one for the state superintendent, county superintendent, and the chair and vice chair of the state board, a county board, and accountability and implementation board. So they have two sort of leadership academies that they'll be running, or MSD will be running. And then they give a lot of detail about all the things that they're going to do in the Leadership Academy for these different groups. And then, they cross that a lot, but let me get to where... Then they're putting together, they have a National Recruitment Teacher Recruitment Campaign, which that language continued, and that will continue through and/or honor before July 1, 2029. And they're also, within that campaign, they're going to have the Maryland Teacher Relocation Incentive Grant. So, and we talked about this once before, so what will happen is, let's say, a candidate goes to the process and we decide to hire the person, and so they have a signed contract and everything, then the school system will have to submit a proposal to the department so that the candidate can receive a $2,000 grant. So, each new candidate that signs on has the opportunity to receive a $2,000 grant, which may incentivize them to want to work in our school system. I will say though, that also is another piece of paperwork that has to be done then by our school system. It's administrative process burden, I would say, in order to be able to make sure that the candidates do receive this. And then actually, the grants are going to, they're going to start making their initial grants MSD is October 1, 2025, so this fall. So, I don't know, I guess HR can start advertising that if you can work for us, you can receive an additional $2,000 through MSD. They are also continuing with the Academic Excellence Program, which, if you recall, that they would have these teaching coaches that would go into the schools, and initially, the emphasis would be on early literacy, and then at least the first two or three years. And then after that, they would look at the other topics, other subject areas, or math would be the focus. It's important though, that the... What's really important about this is that it's the department, so the department should enter into a cooperative agreement with the county board they elect to participate in the program. So not all school systems have to, you know, be a part of this, but, and you would have to actually have, probably like an MOU or something, to be able to do that. And they're going to, the department is going to select schools that have low proficiency rate or declining achievement in recent years. And, but the important piece of this is, and I did mark this down, that money for that program is not going to come out of the blueprint. It's actually going to, it says here, provide... Let me see if I can find it. It will come from a special non-lapsing fund that is not subject to, they reference the article, but it's not coming out of the actual blue fund, funding. So that's actually very positive, that that money will not be, they're not taking money away from the blueprint. And they also say that money from the blueprint for Maryland's future funds may not be transferred into the fund to cover the cost of this excellence, this training program with the coaches and everything. And then they have a lot of different, a lot of financial information in terms of these expenditures related to this, and the actual fund that it'll be coming from. And then, let me see what else. They have the, this is the, the community schools. Oh, so then, in terms of, they've actually backed to community schools, they also talk about that, so with wraparound services, we had put in, I think, a couple items of additional wraparound services that came from the law from last year. Since then, they did add a new wraparound service, which is offering evidence-based in-school and in-person tutoring provided during the school day. And then the other piece that has to be focused on would be improving student attendance, and they've added "and" chronic absenteeism. So I think those are things that we are going to want to add to our policy to address. And then they also... Let's see, they did allow MSD to hire some additional staff. And I honestly feel like, I don't know if you're aware of it, but MSD is currently auditing every school system in the state of Maryland for the use of their community school funds. And so, we're a part of that. And they have language in here where they're, you know, they're beefing up, they're having a director now, community schools at the state level, and they're adding some staffing there. I have a funny feeling that there's going to be, as time goes on, they're going to have higher levels of accountability for the community schools to ensure that that money that we're putting into community schools is getting results and that we are doing what we are supposed to do with that funding. They, it also says that we have to add a set of measurable goals tied to priorities identifying the needs assessment, and that the issue at least once every two years, that the assessment, the assessment and the results of it, as well as the implementation plan, must be reviewed to determine progress towards meeting the goals. And if need be, then there would have to be changes. And then for any system, and I said that before, but any system that is using funds for administrative costs, the department will be establishing requirements for school implementation plans and county-wide community school implementation plans. So we will be looking at adding that language. Let's see. I think that's the biggest piece for the policy. And then, the next thing had to do with the... Find the language here, the collaborative, so they have a collaborative, when they're referencing a collaborative, which means commitments to partnership with at least one other school system, or it could be like a couple of school systems and also labor unions. And it would be to do your own, grow your own type of program. And so, I think would then provide some funding related to this. And they're offering teacher licensure programs on the job, experiential learning with these collaboratives. But it would be with like, say, one or two local school systems along with their teachers' unions to put this together. And so there's language related to that. And then, they have a lot of different pieces to that, with requirements and everything for that piece. And then, starting in July 1 to summer, the MSD shall consult with a national nonprofit entity that has successfully guided other state education agencies and local education agencies that have increased in the number of licensed teacher. And this is part of it launching the Sustainable Cost-effective Grow Your Own Teacher Preparation Program. So, they are going to be the ones implementing the teacher, Grow Your Own Teacher Preparation Program, where they'll be implemented, you know, implementing teacher apprenticeships and teacher residencies. And the goal, of course, is to increase teacher workforce and improve teacher retention and diversity. And then, with this collaborative that's formed between, you know, one or two local school systems and employee organizations, that they will require, they're going to award the grant that to like collaboratives that are composed of a group more, they want more than one local school system. So that's going to be a factor, and if we get any money for it. And that implements a registered teacher apprenticeship program to administer by the department with standardized curriculum, and then across the state, and an institution of higher ed. So they're really dictating all the parameters of how this Grow Your Own would actually work in order for you to, for a school system to really be awarded any funding. And the grants are awarded on a competitive basis. So, it sounds like a lot of work to be able to get some funding for that. And then, let me see what else we have here. I talked about excellence, I talked about leadership, I talked about...
Robin?
Yes.
I think we've been going for a minute here. I want to see if my colleagues have any questions or if they've got any thoughts. I know we, so I think I'm going to see if my colleagues have comments, questions, or thoughts. Board member Walker?
Thanks so much, Robin, for this information. Hey, I do have a question. One, is your team going to do work on what this might mean for increases as we get our budget back? It needs to do reconciliation? So for, yeah, great, because I heard the piece about in-class tutoring, which I actually love, but I know that I do have questions around what that means for the current learning, as well as any additional teachers or aides that are mandated to, you know, be in that space for that purpose. As we talk about collaborative time, I know that that takes pieces away from the classroom in some instances. And so we want to just make sure we're not taking too much away while still giving what we need for the scholars. So, just some thoughts.
Right, we will be tearing this apart and looking at, because it actually runs across numerous divisions in the school system. So it's going to be important to have all the players involved and identify for them the things that they're going to be responsible for doing, and that they need to implement, and what they're thinking, and what will happen. And in doing that, usually, we end up getting lots of emails too about, well, this, we can't do this, this isn't going to work, we have to try this, blah, blah, blah. But it gives us a good sense of how, what the impact's going to be from the bill.
Excellent, and then for the remainder, oh, I think Dr. Moss was going to say something, but let me use the remainder of my time real quick, is I was wondering if you had, maybe we could talk about this at the end, Dr. Moss. I wanted to see like what our next step overarching plan is. So, just by month, maybe not even by month, maybe by every two weeks. So for instance, we got the information back, now their team is taking a look at it, then it'll come to our committee, then we'll be ready for reconciliation, just so we can be a little prepared for this budget discussion for reconciliation, based on bills.
Great, great comments, board member Walker. Two things, Jon Tel's going to come after this to kind of give us an overview of what happened in the legislative session, what wins we had. Your comment around, what does this mean? I think that, I don't know that, I think that's going to come from budget, from OBFA a bit more, but I certainly think we can ask for that as the PNG committee. So, I'll reserve some time at the end of the meeting for you to flesh it out a little bit, so I can get your request right, if that's okay. Board member Boozer-Struther?
Yeah, thank you so much, and thank you, Ms. Welsh. I appreciate us digging into this, and I see on our list, we have quite a few bills to look at. One thing that I would like to ask for at this point is, during, you know, when these bills are introduced and we were working on them, there was sort of this black hole of like, who the thought leader, writer was of sections of 429, that it was even the state superintendent working with the governor. Like those, those questions were problematic for our advocates at Strong Schools Maryland, as well as for us, because we didn't know who we should be talking to about the nuances of each of the sections of 429. So what I would like to request is now everyone just be honest about who these writers were, these policy experts that were called upon, so we could, so we know who to ask why. Why did you write the Grow Your Own this way? Why did you write, you know, some of these other bills this way? I would like to know who in MSD helped draft this, like who we now go to. I mean, I know that as a board member, I may not be that person, but this mystery of these... Has been very frustrating this session, and I would root out there, who wrote it, so that we could avoid this next session. You know, that was the biggest complaint from Strong Schools, was like, we had no discussion ahead of this bill. Why was there no community input? Why was there no discussion with our superintendents, with our boards about some of these changes? So, that's something I hope you can help us map, so we could actually talk to these people before they write bills again. Thanks.
Can I just say one thing? I do know that the superintendents group, they really worked to try to get communication from MSD about a lot of these things in advance. And in the past, that they've had a good relationship where the state would share and give them, you know, give them heads up on a lot of different things. And my understanding is that was not the case this year. And so, it was very hard for them to get the information that they normally were able to get. And so, I'm guessing what you're saying, you know, in terms of strong schools and just not having any information right up front, I have a funny feeling part of that is because they weren't sharing the information.
Thank you so much, Robin.
Thank you for confirming that, that sort of how this felt was different. It did, it did really, it definitely seemed more mysterious this year. I appreciate your confirmations that Pazam had the same issue.
Yep.
Any other colleagues with questions on Excellence for All? Well, one, thank you, Robin, for pulling this together. You know, I think that this measure has significant implications down the road, more so than it does next year, and I think we need to be hyper-aware of that. You know, particularly this trigger around if revenues are not where they need to be, no increases to per pupil funding, based on the December 1 date, is most interesting. One, I didn't hear, you talk about this, but there is a maintenance of effort provision around if the county raises its property taxes at all, it can't actually reduce its contribution to the local school district based on what it was this year. So the maintenance of effort provision inside of Excellence for All, I felt was really strong, and I think folks need to know about that. I hope the county is looking at it, so the county does have a responsibility to maintain its existing effort, should it decide to raise taxes at all. It couldn't decrease what it's given to local school districts. And to be honest, that is quite progressive, if I can't find another word. It's a quite progressive of line of policymaking to really force the local government to maintain its effort if it raises taxes. I don't know where that's done anywhere else in the country. So, I certainly want to uplift that, you know, as we talk about this bill. So it certainly has its challenges, you know, I really have strong concerns around, you know, what happened was, they came out with one measure and had the foundation per pupil funding, which was lower than what was originally set in the original work. And then they came back and said, we'll give you a little bit more than that. So this certainly looks like a compromise bill. And I think, you know, I'm curious to see its total impact on PGCPS, compounded with the reduction that we'll see. I know the US Department of Education rejected extension requests today from several states around being able to use ESSER funds. So, I do want to really, you know, tag on here that I would really like to see, you know, very soon, you know, how this impacts our existing work. And I would imagine Ms. Howell and her team are doing that as we speak.
And I also will be contacting like HR, as well as academics and stuff, because that, just all these new things that they're putting in place, that's going to impact their operations. So I will be finding out what that impact will be for them too.
Okay, all right, and so I appreciate you. Did you have another large bill you wanted to talk about before Jon Tel gives us the overview of the session? I know you all have talked about this. So Jon Tel, are you ready to give the overview?
Yes, if Robin's all wrapped up, I'm ready.
Yeah, I am. If you hadn't been here, I would just be going through the list of what passed, but you're here, so go right ahead.
Okay, great. I first, just thank you again, Robin, for such a thorough overview. Super helpful for the Excellence in Education bill. I guess, in a way, to board member Boozer-Struther's question, and also, and I'm sorry for getting who asked about next steps, maybe it was board member Walker, but this bill, it feels, because of the amount of uncertainty with the budget, that's where I think a lot of the secrecy came from. But that also gave a lot of opportunity this session too, to make sure that the board's voice was at the table. And I think that, you know, just kind of also adding that MAB had a turnover, and so even our statewide org that would have pulled information in was kind of adjusting, just as anyone would to a new job. And so, with that said, I think we can anticipate from some of the inroads, the board was able to meet with every elected on the major committees that decide on education policy and education budget. And some of, and all of the talks also included an open door for next steps on how to imagine these coming together. And so, just as a reminder, I'm not quite sure how it works within you all's system, but the next step after the law passes is the regulations get written, and the regulations give a bit more of the how-to. There are opportunities to be involved in the writing of regulations. This usually comes through an invitation, but I think that that's, if you all are interested, I just wanted to flag that part of the process as well. And so, kind of, I'm going to skip Excellence in Education because Robin did such a great job going through it, unless you all have particular questions about it, and just kind of give the quick, the high notes. And so, you all should have gotten an update where you saw that, I would say, the majority of bills that were being tracked did not make their way across the finish line by signee die. But that's not necessarily a bad thing, because as we know, many of the legislation might have been duplicative to things that already existed. things that already existed, were involving themselves in curriculum or other areas that typically are not the jurisdiction mandated by the state and other things. But, and so I'm not going to go into ones that didn't pass unless you all have questions about them. But with the ones that did pass, that I want to flag were ones that you all were concerned about and had actually submitted testimony. So HB 422, Public Middle and High Schools Student Discipline, or the Right to Teach Act, that one did pass, and so we should expect to see, you know, and you know what, I'm actually, I apologize, I'm misreading the number on that. That one did not pass, thank God. Sorry, HB 161, so this one's the Comprehensive Health Education Framework. There was a, you know, because it is involved in the curriculum, this is something that PG CPS board was opposed to, but it did pass. And so the idea is that, you know, although it's the legis, the state legislators trying to influence curriculum, that it should be more of a work group to start, but that with the expectation, you know, that the Department of Ed, along with the, the Department of Health, would work to create a framework. So it's not quite a mandate on what the framework would be, but a mandate that it occurs and which agencies work with it. The other one, the other two, last two that you all, that passed that you might want to keep an eye on was the Education Youth Suicide Prevention School Programs. This one also was just on technicality by curriculum, something that was a little bit concerned about. But again, you know, it was revised and amended in a way that should be more favorable, and I'm pulling it open now just to fact check myself on the amendment. So that, yeah, they changed it from a must to a should. And I think overall, again, like it wasn't that the intent wasn't potentially aligned, but that the enactment of saying a must, you know, enact certain programs that were unfunded. So this has been changed to a should, and yeah, that's, those are the only ones I really wanted to flag is ones that had caused concern early in session, but had evolved to be less concerning. I can go, they're, they're the ones to celebrate, I don't know.
Can you just go over the table real quick, and then Board Member Walker, I'll get you just the table of what happened, what we opposed, what we had amendments. So if you could go over the table, and then we could take some questions from, from colleagues.
Yeah, is it okay if I share my screen?
I don't know that you have permission, that's a Cindy question, so.
Testing it, let's see.
As you can.
Okay, perfect. So I'm going to make, I'm going to show just enough info, but you all have the more detailed one. And so the ones that passed, and this one, I don't know how this got mixed up.
I'm sorry, when I say table, I meant the summary table, that's in a
Oh, okay, yes, 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 I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Give me one second to. Yes, I kind of alluded to it earlier with the opposed part, but I didn't complete the thought. So just to make sure that you all understand in terms of the actions, you all took action, you all took position on 73 different bills with even more being monitored. Some of those were cross filed. Of those 73, the, of the, you opposed 40 of them, and 36 of those did not pass, and I just went through a little more detail with the ones that did and the changes. You were in support or support with amendment for 32 of them, and, or sorry, for 33 of them. And some of those changed, as we know, like if something was amendment, or we had conversations that made stuff clearer, sometimes a position would change, which is why I'm lumping them together. And successfully, you know, you all were able to get across the finish line, 12 of the 30 something bills. But I will say, just making sure everyone understands the nuance of the numbers, not all of these bills were generated by the school board. Some of them came to you all's plate to review and figure out if they aligned, but weren't necessarily ones that were, you know, in need of a lot of push or action. I would say that like, this session was extremely successful in terms of the, the priorities that you all heard from the community around the funding, around the facilities, and around certain policy measures.
Thank you so much, John Tell, and I'd be remiss if I say this, it's partly because of your leadership. You know, having you has just been an amazing thing for this board, to be able to really strengthen our collaboration with our partners in Annapolis. So I want to personally thank you in this venue. I don't know that we could have done this without you. I know I couldn't have, so I don't want to overspeak from my colleagues, but I trust they feel the same way. So, so thank you so much for your leadership around this, and really sharing out where the bills are, how many. We're actually, that summary table is really important. I just want to gloss over one thing, Board Member Boozer Struthers, we'll probably talk about this, but I think we, we successfully avoided a bunch of unfunded mandates, which is just a huge priority of this board. That's first thing I looked for in the table, did any unfunded mandates pass? Because we spent our time, you know, really advocating against those, telling people, these are really great ideas, but we don't have the money to do it, so. Or you're not giving us new revenue for it, so I did want to highlight that. But I'll turn it over to my colleagues at this time. Board Member Walker, I think you did have your hand up.
I did, I did. I'm really excited to hear that report out. Thank you so much, John Tell. And I also wanted just to echo Chair Moss and just say, this has been an extremely successful, in my estimation, legislative session, and it was really largely because you were on the ground, you kept us, you kept us involved, you were letting us know minute by minute what meetings, making scheduling meetings, making sure we were very clear, talking on our behalf. So I really just wanted to say thank you, because we couldn't have really done it. We've done work, I will say, up to these, the, the last two years, we really worked hard to get to where we are right now, and I'm really excited about it. Want to also thank Ms. Welsh and that entire team, because that tracker was something that we used at all times. So thank you so much for that. As I use the remaining of my time, I wanted to, one, recommend to our chair a couple of things. The first is, I think we should go for this invitation for the, for the regulations, that's just my thoughts. And maybe you can talk to John Tell and you all's regular meeting to see, what does that look like? How do we get involved? But my vote is absolutely hands down at every table we are able to, especially at a session, so that we can continue this massive collaboration and dialogue that we've had. The other is, I am interested in this youth, I'm a fan of youth suicide prevention over and over again, right? Anything mental health, youth suicide, bullying in that realm right there. And so I just wanted to know a little bit more about, I guess I'll read the bill. What was the bill number this party for, Ms. Welsh? But if one of you all know the bill number for that, just wanted to look into that and then see if we can, as a committee, talk to, or you can, Chair Moss, talk to Dr. White, just to see what her thoughts are around how we can just integrate into our current curriculum, whether it's health, whether it is, what do you call those, assemblies, whatever we need to do in order to try to navigate this in without any additional staffing. So maybe we could chat with her, and I can use the remaining time when I come back for another round. Thanks.
So I can jump in and answer about SB 310, Senate Bill 310. And so this one, so they're already in the code, is a youth suicide prevention program. And so this one was updating it to include behavioral health, gambling addiction, and also recognizing students experiencing trauma and violence outside of schools. The amendment and the part that was, again, I say concern, because it's always so difficult with these subjects where, again, where like the intent is aligned, but you know, the mandate, so it actually, it got amended so that it was no longer a mandate, it's a should. You know, should include these additional features in the programs, and so it's, it's up to you all to carry it forward.
And, and I'd also like to point out that this actually would fall under Dr. Davis's realm because of student services, because they're the ones that put the, all the suicide programs together. So this is something that I would suspect, even though it is a just a should and not a must, that probably they will look at, you know, making those increases in, in terms of the, the breadth of what they address for, related to suicide for kids.
Any other colleagues?
Oh, well, I did if they didn't for a second round, whenever you're ready.
Got you, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to ask about the cell phone policy. It didn't, it didn't make our list, but I think, oh, it was a no? No, so. So far down that it was, the requirement was that we have a policy, which we already adhere to, but I thought that something went through for that. Oh, it didn't go through.
No, it got on the penultimate step and did not technically make it across the finish line, neither of the ones that still had momentum.
None of the seven, because there were seven. We started with seven, none of them were six.
Okay, well, we have a policy, a cell phone policy, so we can, I mean, we can, you know, we visit that for communication, but, thank you. Wow.
And MS has a major task force that is actually working on the recommendations for things to incorporate into their cell phone policy. So I'm sure we're going to be, and that might be part of it, that, that sort of held everything back, because I think they're waiting to hear what all the recommendations are that should be included in the policy.
Yeah, and just so we're, you know, just to let the public know, and the superintendent, I mean, much of what the bill was going to do, our superintendent and leadership are currently doing, and got surveys out around that. So, you know, I think PG CPS will remain a leader on this front. We were the, we've been the leader, so. Yeah, it was some interesting stuff that happened with that cell phone bill there at the last minute, we, you know, vendors trying to really influence the policy until ultimately it looks like it crashed. Board Member Boozer Struthers? No, Board Member Walker, are you good? You got a minute?
Oh, thank you, I still have a minute left. Really quickly, I think that just by way of communication, one thing that we might recommend to the board is to work around some communication on our own side about the cell phone policy for board members to be able to put out in our newsletters, et cetera. Because that was something that some of our community did talk about, and I think we can just be standardized and easy communications tool. Thanks, and I'm finished.
All right, Board Member Boozer Struthers?
Yeah, thank you so much. And John Tell, I want to also add, you know, my thanks for your work and, you know, helping us be so effective, and, and Robin, the effective work with our administration. I really appreciated how we were such a team going in, and I really think how we showed up for that initial joint hearing on SB 429, HB 504 was critical to our success and sort of set a tone, I think, for us internally and externally. The, there's a couple bills here that are about the board. One is this anti-bias training that seems to be something new, and it says each board member within, has to do it at least once within a term. So I think we need to make, see if that's something we need to move into our own documents. And then the other is this ethics policy, but I, but I think it's only adding in the city of Baltimore commissioners, it's in your first page of your chart of these past things. So I just didn't pay, I just didn't even notice them during session, so I, I'm reading them for the first time now, but we need to know if it's a change for us.
Board Member Boozer Struthers, the one on the bias training, when we talked to HR, they said it was embedded in our onboarding, the whole bias and sensitivity thing that we do. So I don't know if any more of the language has changed, but it's already embedded in the work that we do. But I, I, I do hear you out on flagging it again. We just need to make sure there's no language that's any different from what was originally there. But when we talked to, to them originally, they were like, hey, you, you do this all over your onboard.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that. If you do, if you do your videos, if you do your Safe Schools videos as a board member, that seems like a qualification, and I agree, there's many segments of that, that, that would make us compliant year over, we're supposed to do them every year. So I guess I just want to know if we have to put in writing somewhere that we met the deadlines, that we're aware of the deadlines, just so, you know, we're, we're on top of that, because I agree, we're, again, we're a step ahead, which is not unusual for us. One thing, the lesson, the cell phone policy, you know, some lessons learned that I think we can assert ourselves a little more to get ahead of, you know, the, you know, the first, I think many of us, when we saw this eagerness for state policy was, you're really getting into a board member's hard work, and you will find how difficult this work is when you try to do this. And, and in fact, I watched them struggle the way we do when we help our superintendent with these policies. So I hope we can use that as a model of when we go to our partners and say, you know, we, you know, you're working on the work of the board, and let us explain why, and remember what happened with cell phone policy. So that's, that's the lesson learned for me.
Sweet. Chair breaks?
Okay, thank you so much. John Tell, I just wanted to make sure, I took a moment to thank you for all of the, the work that you've done. I know you put so much time and effort in your team. It just, it wasn't that long ago that we were interviewing you, and I was like, you just stood out so much because you did a dynamic job. And so I'm definitely looking for part two, 2.0, and how we can kind of use a lot of the lessons learned from this session to advance and be even more effective next year. It just continues to get better each year, so thank you for that. I'm a bit distracted, so I haven't had a lot of questions, as I'm planning for unfortunately a meeting later, but I did want to make sure I've made that statement.
I mean, that's a, she's a product of PG CPS, let's not forget that. All right, well, folks, I think that, that, that balances out our time for our legislative update. We've got some other pieces that we'll be taking care of, you know, a post-session wrap-up that will be a little bit more public. And then we'll start our planning process for our legislative work. But colleagues, I heard you out on a couple of action steps that we need to take moving forward. I'll make sure I deliver on those and get those set up for us. John Tell, again, thank you for coming. You, you're free to go. We're about to jump into some policy work for the last bit of time here. But again, thank you for coming. Colleagues, are we good to go? Legislative before?
Thank you.
All right, cool. Unfortunately, Ms. Welsh, you can't go. We're going to move to policies for first consideration. These are discussion items. Colleagues, tonight we have two items for discussion. Each member will have two rounds per item during the discussion. Each round will be 2.5 minutes. We will start with Policy 3120, which is debt management. The chair recognizes Ms. Welsh to provide an overview of 3120 around debt management.
Okay, Cindy, would you mind? Thank you. So this policy, this is just a revision of the current policy that we have posted on the website. And basically, the policy statement is that we want our debt policy to be a well-managed debt program, and that we, the board recognizes a binding commitment to full and timely repayment of all debt as a necessary element of Prince George's County Public Schools in terms of maintaining a sound debt position. And that, that the board is committed to making debt decisions based on the result of deliberate considerations of all factors. And so the purpose of the policy is to establish guidelines for governing the issuance, manu, man, management and evaluation of, and reporting of all debt. So as you go down to the standards, and this is what I wanted to point out for everyone. So in the current policy, it talks about a committee that, and I, I should have that one in front of me, oh, here it is. That the current policy talks about the board's Finance Audit and Budget Committee that makes recommendations regarding the issue of debt obligations and the management of outstanding debt. So going back now, this policy, the current policy was done in 2007. So my guess is, is that that Finance Audit Budget and Budget Committee is now your current OBAFA Committee, Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee. And so they, the current policy basically says that this would, that it would go through, the committee actually makes the recommendations regarding the issue of debt obligations. And then it goes to the full board, and the full board that, you know, that makes a decision on what they're going to do. So saying that piece, because that's really the biggest piece in terms of how this would work if the school system was going to take on debt, I took that information and put together what I think it should be in terms of how it should work, the process. If you, I mean, certainly any changes you want to make, or you think it should be done differently, then we can absolutely make those changes. But this was just based on my best guess on what you had previously. So first of all, it would be just, and it sort of reminds me a little bit, if you think about how policy and governance works, our committee, it's similar in this. our committee, it's similar in this sense, because first of all, the superintendent would be responsible for following, for, uh, for providing, uh, the following information related to lease purchase financing for review, review and approval by the committee. So the superintendent would be providing information about the debt term restrictions, available funding to support acquisition of lease purchase financing, alignment with the PGPS strategic plan, cost minimization, risk management, and acceptable ranges for debt. And so, and then the next section actually talks about what those acceptable ranges for debt, which we can go back to in a minute. But then, once they review it, um, uh, they are supposed to, then the committee, so they review, uh, and approve the superintendent's, uh, proposal. And then from there, the committee then makes recommendations to the board regarding the issue of debt and obligation management of outstanding debt. So it's the superintendent, like, providing the information. The committee then, you know, evaluates the information, it makes a determination of whether or not they feel this is something they should move forward. And if they do feel that it's news, uh, that we should have that debt, then they move it to the full board for a, uh, for a, uh, determination of whether they will approve that. And so, um, I, so I did go back through, and I looked at all the committee reports, and I did not, for BAFA, and I did not see any conversation about debt in, in, in most of those, um, uh, in those meetings. Um, but however, I also went through board agendas and found where there was a board summary formed, uh, that, uh, that was provided by, um, at that time, Mike Dottery, who was the director, I think, of finance. And he actually, uh, threw a, um, um, him making the recommendation, he listed out, and this is, uh, what they, the recommendation was for the debt, what they were going to use the money for. I think it was for buses, uh, textbooks and some equipment, uh, IT equipment maybe. And then, um, and, and he listed out what the cost was. They did a, they actually did an RFP for a banking institute that would then provide the, um, the, the money. And then it also provided what percentage it would be, the interest rate for it, as well as then the payment schedule to pay off all of this. And he provided this to the board, and then the board voted on it. So there was no committee involved, but in essence, if, if you go to what the policy says, it really would be, he would be national, providing all this information to the board, to the committee, which the committee would then make the recommendation, and it would then come to the board. If you don't want to go that route, and you want to go directly to, bypass the committee and go directly to the board, then that's certain, we can make those changes. That's perfectly fine. Um, but anyway, the, uh, most, the one thing that's important is that acceptable ranges. If we scroll for a second, uh, Cindy, to be the acceptable ranges of, uh, of debt as far as, um, that, uh, and this would be, um, you're gonna, things that you might borrow money for could be like equipment, uh, oftentimes IT equipment, buses, textbooks, um, or anything, anything actually that you would really think that you needed money for to, as we don't have the money, but we needed it. I did talk also to Jason Washington, because initially I thought, well, don't we have some money? Uh, don't we have some debt-related capital, uh, programs? But we don't because of the P three program. So there's nothing related to capital programs in this. So we're really just looking at things like equipment, buses, textbooks, in operational kinds of things. Um, and so, then, of course, the debt cannot exceed five percent of the total unrestricted budget, and the revenue streams considered for post-debt service must meet a two percent debt coverage ratio test. Um, and, uh, only time that we might bypass that, and there'd be an exception, would be if there was some type of alternative funding source. Um, anyway, so then, if you go back down, the superintendent, um, provides the proposal to the committee, then the committee scrolled down to D, please, Cindy. And then, and what the superintendent must provide, though, at a minimum for the information would be, um, uh, information about the, the, the financial institution, including what responses they received, um, and financial, uh, from other financial institutions, and what, which one had the best overall response and lowest interest cost for the term of the financing, and then the maximum principal amount of borrowing, the maximum term of debt, the maximum interest rate to be borne by the debt, and the scheduled debt service payments for the life of the debt. Um, and then you actually go through a resolution for, um, in order, and that's actually true. I did see that on the agenda, so that we do have a resolution for the actual, where the board's asked to authorize, uh, the requested debt. And then the superintendent is supposed, or doesn't he supposed to provide a quarterly report to the board on the status of the debt obligations, including a list of projected needs, a comparison of revenue projections, uh, sufficient to pay the debt service in the balance. So that is it in a nutshell. I don't know if anyone has any, um, any questions, um, any suggestions for changes, whatever you may think. I did work with, I will say, I did work with our, um, uh, the Treasury, our Treasury Operations Office on this to ensure that the information was correct.
Okay, um, thank you, Ms. Welsh. Um, the question is, shall the committee recommend policy thirty-one twenty debt management to the policy sponsor for revision approval? Is there any discussion? Okay, um, Ms. Adelaide, please take the roll call.
Dr. Moss?
Um, I.
Ms. Brakes?
Hi.
Ms. Buddha Strather?
Hi.
Ms. Walker? Point here for missing.
All right, um, policy thirty-one twenty debt manage will be recommended to the policy sponsor for revision approval. Now, our last item, um, for tonight is policy thirty-three twenty-three. It's purchasing. Uh, the chair recognizes Ms. Welsh to introduce her, presenters to provide an overview of policy thirty-three twenty-three, purchasing. Ms. Welsh?
Yeah, okay, so, if anything you've seen, like, uh, like, in blue or red, those, that's, uh, changes that we had done previously. And the reason we did end up holding off moving this policy through was because, um, we then realized that there were going to probably be some findings in the OLA audit that would cause us to want to make some changes to the policy. So I have highlights that it makes clear what we are, did, what I did add to the policy to address the findings, um, from the, uh, OLA audit and then, um, their corrective action plan. So if you'll scroll down, Cindy, and we'll get to the first, um, just keep going. Okay, so we'll be talking about the intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreements. That was one of the things that, um, that was, um, there were findings on it. And just, just as a recap, it's a contract that's entered into by at least one government entity in a certain manner that's available for use by the government entity entering the contract, and at least one additional government entity, and that is intended to promote efficiency and savings that can result from intergovernmental cooperative purchasing. So lots, a lot of times, the other school systems have already have a contract with, say, a particular, a company or whatever. And, um, um, instead of taking, putting it out the bid and everything, and that entire process, depending on if it looks like it's a viable contract, and the terms of it are acceptable for the school system, then purchasing will enter into, uh, uh, ICPA. Um, so that's one thing that there was findings about that we'll talk about in a second. Then if you scroll down a little bit further, then, um, there's reference to sole source. So I did put a definition in there, which is procurement through solicitation of a proposal from only one source. And then the other one was special education, non-public placements. Um, and for our special education students, uh, if there comes times where the programs we actually offer within the, within Prince George's County Public Schools, that what the needs of the student might require something more intense. And so, of course, there are non-public placements throughout the state of which the board, which the Maryland State Department of Education, uh, has to approve. It goes through, you know, they do, like, I guess audits of those programs to ensure that they meet all the needs, all the requirements. Um, and also, the state also does partial funding of those placements. And so, um, uh, that's considered a non-public placement. Um, and then if you scroll down, I think we get into standards next. Yes, so, uh, keep going, Cindy. Okay, so one of the things, um, that they, we have throughout this document, it talks about that a report shall list all contract awards by type. Uh, we, we say that all contract actions for above category, category, if you remember, the policy is broken into different categories of contracts. So this one says, the report shall, that, but call contract actions for above categories shall be reported to the board on a bi-annual basis. So twice a year, purchasing should be providing you information about, um, about, uh, the, what, uh, contracts they have entered into. And so, to ensure that it meets, um, the requirements that came through in the OLA audit, the report shall list all contract awards by type, whether it was RFP, IFB, task order, ICPA, sole source or emergency procurements, and then include the manner of their procurement, the vendor and the award amount. So instead of just giving you the name of whatever they're involved in a contract, you would get very specific information about each of the contracts. And that is in each of the sections where it says that there will be, um, the contract actions will be provided for that particular category, each, uh, two times each year. This is information that's added also, so that you'll get more in-depth information when the purchasing brings it to you. And then if you scroll down further, um, so, um, when they, whenever there's any sole source, um, uh, contracts, then one of the requirements is that there should be a, a sole source justification form that is completed. And that actually then provides the justification for the determination to award sole source contract awards. One of the things that came out of the OLA audit was that there was no, um, there was no, um, many times, there'd be a decision to, uh, contract with, let's say, a sole, so sole source contractor. However, they never, there was no justification, well, why did we go that route? You know, why, why didn't we consider something else? So now it will be a requirement to have that form completed with all the information to justify why it would be sole source. Um, and then if you scroll down further, um, and that's the same one that by, that twice yearly reports, the same information, and keep scrolling, Cindy. Same one, their twice yearly report, and then all the information that must be provided. Keep going. Um, and I don't know what happened here with the, with the margins, but anyway, it's the same thing. And now we're at, another exception is special education, non-public placements. So when, so just to give you a little history on special education, non-public placement, you can scroll, scroll down to the next page, Cindy. Um, when, so an IAP team makes a decision that this child is really in need of a non-public placement, that the programs we have within the school system are not meeting the needs of the student, and so now they're looking for a non-public. By law, by both federal and state law, it's not something that you have the time to go out and bid a contract out for how many schools are out there, um, because, because you don't have that kind of time. You, if the child needs it, we need to move as quickly as possible to get the child into the placement they need. Because if the team has determined that the placement is, and this non-public, uh, a non-public placement is an appropriate placement, then the school system's placement is no longer appropriate. And by law, we're required to be providing appropriate placements to students. So we had many conversations with the OLA auditors about this, because at first they said, well, you have to bid it out. And we said, there's no way. You would never meet the legal requirements to the, to provide the services to the students. So, and we do, I will say this, the state requires that a cost sheet is completed for every one of these non-public placements, which is then signed off by both the school system as well as the, uh, non-public. And it just lists out the total tuition cost, and then if the student's getting related services, the cost of each of the related services. Uh, and if it's a student who's receiving residential, then it'll have a whole residential component and those costs. So what they went, that, they felt that was not good enough. And what they wanted to see was a formal written contract for every one of the non-public school placements, um, that, uh, we, you know, we, and we use a good number of non-public placements, and we have students, like several students that might be going to the same non-public placement. But at, for each, each student that's going out to a non-public placement, there should be a contract that lays out, uh, specifically what the cost, the nature, and the number of services that will be provided to the student. And the reason the OLA auditors felt this was important was because it does protect the school system if there's ever a, a situation where the non-public school did not deliver, because then you actually have a written contract. Um, then the next thing was, is that, um, so when you look at the services that's being provided, and I know you've probably seen the budget for non-public, it's pretty amazing, the cost that goes into non-public placements. You're talking millions of dollars. Um, but they, initially, they had said, well, uh, the board has to approve each one of these. Well, the problem again is, is that the board only meets once a month to approve. And if you have a student that needs to get placed immediately, then by law, we cannot be waiting for a whole, uh, half a year, or, I mean, a half, a whole month or something in order to get approval. Um, and the other thing is too, just as an aside, it's sometimes very difficult to find a non-public placement. They, they fill up very quickly, so you're working hard to move as quick as you can to get, you know, the appropriate non-public placement, and one where they have an opening. So anyway, so then in a conversation with the, uh, OLA auditors, they said, then what they would like to see is that the, at the beginning of each school year, fiscal year, that the report would be provided to the board that would list a comprehensive list of approved non-public placements, and then what the projected costs are, so that you would know right from the beginning of the year, right now, what it looks like for the kids we have in non-public placements, that these, this is the list of all the, uh, approved non-public placements, and this is the projected cost. So at least you have a sense of it. And then at the conclusion of the fiscal year, then a detailed report would be provided to the board, detailing all of the expenditures related to the non-public placement for that fiscal year, so that you would have a full picture of how much it costs the school system in terms to provide the non-public placement to the, uh, students that receive the services. So that was that, that was a finding number three, actually. And then if you scroll down, so then the other piece had to do with the evaluation and participation in the ICPA's. Um, and so, one requirement is that the Purchasing and Supply Service Procedure Manual must be revised. So that's why we have the superintendent, doesn't he shall revise the Purchasing Supply Service Procedure Manual to include the nationally recognized procurement best practices from Nordic, uh, Global Investment Foundation, global best practice strategic use of cooperative procurement, and then the sole source selection, a memo and evaluation and selection of the ICPA to select the agreement that represents the best value. So, um, and when you scroll to the end, and I think I put it in there, if you could just scroll to the end, I thought I put it in there. Let's double check. If not, I will be doing it. Keep going. Yes, um, it, um, we will have, and actually, when this gets finalized, it is on the website, it's actually going to have an active link to the Purchasing and Supply Services Manual, so that anyone that wants to see, you know, what's being required, it would be right there for them to see. And again, this is all, um, these were all corrective actions that were provided to the OLA auditors, and they did approve, approve those, um, those corrective actions. So those are the changes based on the audit. It does cover three different findings, so, um, at least we have a head start. Findings in that. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. Um, the question is, shall the committee recommend policy thirty-three twenty-three, um, for, uh, to the policy sponsor for revision approval? There's any discussion? Um, I've, I've got a couple of discussion pieces too here. Uh, looks like Board member Boozer Strather, Board member Walker. Uh, Ms. Welsh, real quick, I just wanted to ask before we jump into this, there were some amounts that were changed across this document that we've not gone over. Um, like, you know, under standards, we went from fifty thousand to one hundred thousand threshold. Um, we went under instructional materials to two million dollars from a million. Um, can you talk a little bit about those thresholds? One, under standards, um, I want us to go back to fifty thousand. I understand the Koma rig, there's a hundred thousand, but I'd like us to go back. And then on professional services, I have concerns with us having two hundred and fifty thousand board approval. Um, I'd actually like to see that number come down a bit. So can you talk to me a little bit about why we changed the thresholds on these policies and what led to those changes?
So the, um, yes, so a one hundred thousand, actually, that was the reason we actually brought the policy to back was because the law. Was because the law passed last year, which increased the amount from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. And so we. And because the board only meets once a year, once a week, once a month. And the process to get someone on the board's agenda, the timeframe from an operational standpoint is.
I can't hear you. We actually can't hear you. Maybe it's just me. Is it just me?
No, you're going in and out.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry. Anyway, so the the policy. The reason, so the reason why a hundred thousand is operational standpoint is that just because. It doesn't slow up the process of contracts that we need to do. That versus only fifty thousand versus a hundred thousand. But the reason we actually did bring the policy back had to do with this, the law changing the law. That was originally fifty and then they increased to a hundred thousand. So that that was the main reason why that was changed because of the law changed. And then the, tell me again, what was the other?
Yeah, so you also moved from one million to two million under instructional materials. And I understand that Kamar made it small value procurement threshold that 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 way. But it doesn't mandate that districts set their procurement threshold at a hundred thousand. So those are my my two concerns.
Okay, and.
And we can, we can come back if we need to. I know my time ran out. I want to hold myself to the same standard I hold others.
So that for that professional services. That language I think was there before, just looking at, I have to pull the regular policy because I think we moved that up to that back. This was this policy in eight eighteen twenty two, but let me double check this link for.
Okay, Board Member Boozer Struthers.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm glad that we're talking about these right away and moving on them and getting more clarity. And I I don't need to add more on those thresholds because it sounds like we're going to get the detailed response that we need. I would like to see against that AP that that the manual too. The. Nonpublic placement. Contracts was something that, you know, definitely surprised me in that report because I was trying to find. You know, they just had done Baltimore County, City of Baltimore, and I didn't see anything. About that around those contracts and I don't know that they're. Doing it any differently than us because it sounds like we were following MSDA guidance. But the. But the thing is, it did leave out that we actually do have a have a founded foundation schools contract every year. We do have a document of our relationship with foundation schools. And I don't know why that's treated differently. So I would like, you know, as we explore this nonpublic. You know, issue that was brought up in the audit. You know, I, my question is, you know, if we were doing it for foundation school, schools, why weren't we doing it for the others? What makes it special? And how we do it for foundation school is that. Cover what's being asked of us. So this is something I wanted to raise.
And and I'm going to have to look into that for you. Them previously. Did you hear me? No one's hearing me. This, what is going on here? I have to tell you, I'm I'm.
We can hear you. It just goes in and out. It fluctuates. So we can hear you. It just goes in and out.
To make too much movement so that I can. I just want to look at the previous policy a second. But I will check out about the foundation school, so. So previously, this is from two thousand and twenty two, the the limit was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that was not a change in the actual amount. There was some. Change in language, but not the actual amount. And then the other one you said.
Are you responding to me right now? Or Board Member Boozer Struthers?
I'm sorry, I was, I I I didn't mean to get, I got this. And you started talking and I was looking at one thing or the other. I apologize. I know, and I I actually I did respond. I do agree with you because I did look at other OLA audit reports from other counties and I didn't see anything about special education. And we did argue the point. We had several meetings with OLA on this. But they they were insistent that this is what needed to be done. So now instructional staff development, was that professional services?
Yeah, so what I what I was saying to you is the two hundred and fifty thousand remains for procuring professional services. That did not change. I actually think the threshold should be lower. What did change though was we had in the policy a million dollars for instructional materials. This revised policy now moves that threshold to two million dollars. And I'm not understanding how we went from one million to two million. If if there's a rationale around why we increase these thresholds.
So I that's one I will have to look for, check with you because that was purchasing that requested that. I'm guessing, this is my guess, is that because of the nature of the contracts that go out, because of what they need to purchase for, you know, the kids we have. When it comes to instructional things, that they're they're finding that the, of course, the cost keeps going up and up and up. And one hundred thousand is, or one million, I'm sorry, is. Many times like you have anything above, you might have lots above a million dollars just because of the nature of the cost nowadays. But I can certainly check on that for you.
Board Member, thank you so much. Board Member Walker, I know your hand is up and then I'll say something on another round. Board Member Walker?
Yes, no problem. I think I'm going to have to do two rounds too, but let me try to get it in. I have a a couple of thoughts for the board's consideration and to Ms. Welsh as well. About four different things as I read through. I think the first is our goal. So thank you for the work you've done on this. It has increased some transparency and accountability in there. So these thoughts are to continue to to do the same. And what it does, I think it's four things that I wanted to step on is. The first is to set a measurable participation benchmark, which is not currently there. So we currently don't set a participation benchmark. I'll go in detail about that in a second. The second is to introduce some transparency through public posting, which is not currently there as well. And the use inclusive language that's really around underrepresented businesses, which we do define later on, but we don't specifically say. And so I wanted to talk to the committee about that. In doing so, there's section four for standards. The first would be a new subsection is what my thought is for the biannual accountability and participation of these underrepresented businesses. And again, is to strengthen our policy commitment that we already have. It also outlines the good faith that we have in all things we do, but specifically calling it out. And. Our rhythm to enhance the transparency. So that proposed language looks something like, and I'm sorry, I didn't send it to you all in advance. But my thought is that the board adopts a verifiable goal that a minimum of X percent. Of the total annual value of purchases of goods and services shall be awarded to underrepresented businesses. These include but are not limited to certified businesses that are women owned, minority owned, disabled owned, veteran owned or nonprofit workers in those. Which I think we have somewhere in there, but it's not really explicit toward the top in the standards piece. The second. While I still have a little bit of time, is that this percentage shall be reviewed periodically based on the industry trends and the community representation. And the second is that the superintendent or designee in the same section shall ensure that good faith efforts are made to increase access. To procurement opportunities for these underrepresented businesses. And so we give some ideas and we can determine what we want to put in there. But the advertising procurement opportunities, the outreach sessions, which I know we have, but being intentional on those and just some language around that. And then the second piece is language that now aligns to that revision. And it just where it says prior to the issuance of the invitation to bids, it keeps that exact language. But at the end, it just says, subject to the participation and accountability requirements for these underrepresented businesses as outlined in the policy. So we don't have to come back and modify those as they change. So I know that was a lot. I just wanted to make sure I said that for underrepresented businesses and exactly what that meant and how we can highlight it in here. As well as the participation minimum account that we should talk about what that feels like for us in professional county.
Yeah. Thank you, Board Member Walker. We're going to do another round here. I want to tag on to Board Member Walker's comment one. I think that's great. Could we go back to our equity policy and use the language from our equity policy? That would include individuals who are LGBTQ plus, who might own a business that could have some representation in this. I think our equity policy lays out quite nicely groups in a in a very nice way that we could also align our procurement policy too. So that we're not only protecting the interest of students and employees who work here, but also folks who own businesses in our county who are part of those underrepresented groups. So I really appreciate that, Board Member Walker. I just want to articulate what I would like to see is go back to the threshold of fifty thousand under, you know, equipment and stuff like that. I also think that the professional services threshold, you know, is a really, is a bit high. And I I can say this because I went and did my research, Montgomery County, who's larger than us. They have to bring anything over fifty thousand to the board for approval, professional services and all that that goes before the board. So I'd actually like to see us come down to possibly, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand or a hundred thousand on that. And certainly would like to see us go back to a million dollars on instructional materials. I I I I respect the leadership of our superintendent, but we need strong accountability around these thresholds. And the more we widen the thresholds, I think the reduced accountability, we can talk about. You know, when these come to the board and put some language to say that, you know, when these contracts come before the board. But I I just think the spending authority is 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 a bit huge here when it comes to contracting. So under first exception back to fifty professional services. You know, other places like fifty thousand, I'm thinking a hundred and fifty thousand. But certainly on instructional materials, I think we've got to go back to a million and not two million without becoming for the board for approval. Board Member Walker?
Yes, if we could take them in sections because I know mine was very lengthy too. So if we talk about this one here, I am in alignment on the thresholds. I do believe in increased accountability and transparency for what we're doing with our contracts. So I would be aligned to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think anything less than that will put the board at a risk of not being able to take a look at them as we intend. And then I also am aligned to the million dollars for instructional. You know, one of the things I think we we could do is get. Get help with getting a spreadsheet. Let's look at the last two years of how many fall within that bucket. So we could at least understand what the work is that we will be looking at because we also need to make sure that that fits within. Our approval processes for boards without causing constraints to the vendors that need to do the work as well. So I am in alignment with you is what I wanted to say for increased accountability and on board approvals. Do just want to see that piece right there to ensure that we can add it into our current meeting structure and we're doing a due diligence, not just a chat off.
Yeah, no doubt. And just Rob, I just want to flag for you, a good one to look at is Montgomery also isolates construction. I don't want to tie the superintendent hands on construction matters, given the rise in cost of things. But those other pieces, and I think we do have an exception around construction in our policy. We certainly don't need to tie the superintendent hands on construction, but we do need to see it more frequently than twice a year, to be honest. Right now, our policy just says we see it twice a year, but that's not what I was attempting to do here. So I don't want to conflate that. Any other colleagues have have anything or they want to add?
And then if we could, since everybody seems aligned on that one, whenever you're ready, if we could go through the other pieces too that I brought up, see if people are in alignment with that.
Let's go, other pieces.
Okay, great. So I don't know, Ms. Welsh, do you want to check with Ms. Welsh if she got everything from that first section?
I probably should have done that. Good call, Board Member Walker. Ms. Welsh, oh, Board Member Boozer Struthers raised her hand.
Actually, I did not get it all, but don't worry, I'll be listening to this video several times to pick up all the pieces, so. Okay, okay.
I got you. I got you. Board Member Boozer Struthers, before Board Member Walker, I'm going to let Board Member Boozer Struthers go before we jump in. Board Member Boozer Struthers?
Hi, can can you hear me?
We can hear you. We can hear you, Board Member Boozer Struthers. Dang, did we lose her? Okay, Cindy, you had a technical question or something you wanted to raise here. I want to make sure I get you.
So I just wanted to say quickly. One of the recommendations that was provided by the parliamentarian to me was that. We should get information like these in writing. So that it could be captured properly in the minutes and to be shared with Ms. Welsh. So I just want to put this out like even if we say it out for the public, if we could also send it in writing. So Ms. Welsh could properly capture them.
Okay, well, colleagues, any any changes to the policy tonight? Let's do follow up in an email so that Ms. Ms. Welsh can have them according to the parliamentarian. And then we can talk about how to do this moving forward. Perhaps we'll write them out moving forward and then bring them. But just to make things tonight, any changes to this, we certainly need to to write them out. Board Member Boozer Struthers, I know you were trying to speak and I wanted to give you the floor.
She's stuck now. I think she's having technical.
Thanks, am I still connected?
You're still connected.
All right.
There you go.
Yeah, my connection's unstable. It's an unstable connection, sorry. I was going back to Board Member Walker's point about, I'm gonna, I think you said, marketing of the opportunities. And I wanted to understand that more if it's this is beyond sort of procurement. You know, we have our procurement page. They have to put out the RFPs and and then announce who got the awards. And then I'm noticing that they actually have a pretty. Pre announcement section that I have to take a look at. I was wondering what what additional you were thinking in that those regards.
Oh, yes. Thank you so much for asking. You know. I don't, and it could be me because I'm not a vendor for PG CPS. I would love for us to be aware of those in a drumbeat so that then we can push it out to our audiences, quite frankly. And then I just want to make sure that when we say this, I don't know that it says it in a policy. I might have missed it. But the advertising procurement opportunities, whether it is, I think that they are doing some targeted marketing. So when television or media outlets that really cater to these underrepresented groups might be advantageous for us. As we move forward, but if the main squeeze is on the procurement website, then just doing a job for us to be able to also advise the public. Because I'm not sure that that's widely known as far as what the timing is, what methods are going, and now she's gone. But I think you guys get the gist. I think she's having technical difficulties. But that's what I meant when I said advertising. So I think we have the opportunity not to go as deep. To tie them with, you have to do X, Y, and Z, but to be very prescriptive on leveraging outlets that cater to these underrepresented populations. As well as leveraging our purchasing portals or websites for that information as well. Sometimes it can get lost in a website or where you go.
I mean. Board Member Walker, I'm curious if you're also open to on the reporting side. If, you know, these these potential vendors could, you know, if they want to. Could shape which identity they fit into is in 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 terms of underrepresented populations and then we report out. You know, just like aggregately, we had this many people from this background to apply for this award. Just holding ourselves accountable for ensuring, you know, these underrepresented populations. You do do know about the process because we should be able to look at the data and say, no Hispanic vendors actually apply for this. And then that would tell us where to target our recruitment.
Yes, precisely.
Okay, I got you. Nice. All right. If there's, if no one else has anything else here. We will take the roll call, but let's make sure we get these written out moving tonight and send to Ms. Welsh, not tonight, whenever. Ms. Welsh, when do you need us to write these back to you?
The sooner the better.
Okay.
We get it done, but I would also.
I'm losing you, Ms. Welsh. I don't hear anything you're saying. I'm sorry.
I don't know what's going on unless we are having that. Anyway. That we bring it back to one more discussion. The reason I say that is just to clarify all the language and we, because that's a lot of changes we're making. And I would want to make sure that we did it as well as, I do, I do want to share all this with procurement because they might have some thoughts on it as well as the superintendent. So, so I'm just thinking, I mean, this is a lot of new stuff. So I really feel like I would like to make sure you've had a chance to see it before you actually say, oh, that's new for action without seeing it.
Yeah, I don't think you should have, I don't think we should advance this one for, uh, second reader tonight or second consideration, which will go to public comment. Um, we'll just bring it back as another first consideration. Um, does that work for the team? Board Member Walker, you had your hand up.
Yes, just really quickly, Ms. Welsh, I'll get you mine tonight. I wrote it out so that I could read it out. Um, I just wanted to double check with the committee if you all, I said a lot, so I don't know if you all had any input for it. But I will send it to the entire committee with, um, to Ms. Welsh with you all on copy in case you had anything additional that she wanted to share with her. Um, as she brings it back.
I'll do the same thing. Okay. Well, I don't think from a procedural standpoint, I don't think I need to do anything now. Am I wrong? Okay, got you. Um, all right. There are no policies for second consideration. There are none for third consideration. Um, the chair informs the public that the next virtual policy and governance committee meeting will be April twenty-ninth. Please continue to check the Prince George's County Board of Education website for meeting information updates. Thank you all for great discussions and attendance. To our viewers, thank you for watching. There being no further business, the time is now six thirty-three. The April ninth, twenty twenty-five Policy and Governance Committee meeting is adjourned.
Thank you tonight.